Try.
Is that any better on your guys' end? First thing that we had to review is solid waste contract. And James, you want to speak on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had put this out to bid a few months ago and we had an interview committee about a month ago, review the two bidders, one was Republic, the other one was McKenzie. McKenzie did not get the pick through the committee for two main reasons, well, I would say three main reasons. One, they had one less garbage truck that they were going to provide. So they were going to try and provide all of the service with one truck, which we thought was problematic. Their price was about fifteen dollars or so a month, it was a pretty big difference. And the main reason for that is they would have, we can only do a five-year contract, and they were going to have to pay down all their debt on a new truck and the garbage cans over that five-year contract. So that made it more difficult for them. And they also offered no recycling whatsoever. And we don't really have any recycling in this contract other than $2,000 of bill give for the e-waste program. But Republic at least offers ways to help the recycling group to transport, which was something that McKenzie's not. So in light of all those issues, everybody on the committee overwhelmingly had outlined. We had a scoring sheet in Republic. Republic, yes, actually, they are allied, it's still in their name technically. Allied with Republic, allied as a division of Republic. So that was where we started with it. I heard back from Chad at Republic last week in the contract. He had just a couple of minor changes that are incorporated. They did have their lawyers look at it, too. They did want us to see a couple of changes, basically remove the name Republic and use our contractor instead. It was nothing of substance. They wanted their title changed from Republic Services to Ally Republic. So that was all that they had to change from the contract. So there'll be a slightly different version, but very mindum, get that out to you at the next pocket. But all in all, I think Republic, there's not a lot of choice to pick from and everybody seemed relatively happy with them.
The good thing about Republic is we get the other Mr. Larson picking up the trash.
Dave, you were involved in this one, do you have anything else to add?
I was very comfortable with Republic's conversation as well. For those who didn't have a chance to sit in on that, and I would encourage anybody to ask any questions that they may have. But the things that I heard were primarily administrative issues. And a lot of them, what I heard was that if we'd reach out from our administrative office with questions on a more frequent basis, they were more than willing to help resolve issues and questions. They talked a little bit about how they had a map and how they would show, you know, how to sync up and make sure the counts were in effect. And one of the things that I was happy about is that they they did remain open to the idea of being able to facilitate the recycling services. But they did have in their mind a very clear distinction between the city residents that are paying for trash removal and solid waste removal and the ability to assist a recycling center. And I think that there may be some possibilities where they can do that. But I was very comfortable with the line that they drew in the distinction there, that they viewed it as two separate entities. But if they were able to work together and help facilitate them, they were more than willing and happy to do so. And I said, everything else was mostly requests from our staff about how they could better keep track of, you know, additional business cans or places where the counts may vary. And their response, I thought, was very professional and what I would expect to see in the business world. Let us know and we'll get it taken care of. Mayor, was there anything else specifically you wanted me to address or was that a good summary?
I think that was very good.
Got a question?
Yes.
And I might have missed it. Was there any difference in the bids from McKenzie and Republic?
Yes, McKenzie was about fifteen dollars a month more per can.
Per can. Per can. It was very significant when you looked at the two over the course of a year. It was a very significant difference.
Yeah, that's about 50% more than Republic, isn't it?
Close to it.
Any other questions on the contract?
I just have one comment. I went over it again as I did the first time when we first met. And they continued to misspell coal miners park. They spell it C-O-L-E instead of C-O-A-L. And I tried to correct it the last time, so I told James again, not James fault, it's that they missed. But when they talk about who they're going to be, they need to be even better. But that's the only thing I could find on the contract.
Mayor, just to clarify, so the request at the action for the next meeting, will it basically be just a motion to approve the mayor executing the contract? Is that correct?
No more discussion on solid waste, everybody's comfortable?
Do we, does the council put forward a resolution to have you execute the contract?
No. Just like Dave was saying, we bring up the contract, you give me permission to sign.
I'm thinking, it seems to me like we have done, I defer to council, but it seems like to me sometimes we have done resolutions to have them sign and it would be easy enough to do. It's just, if that's what's necessary, we should make sure we're prepared for it.
Rebecca, you want to weigh in on that?
Okay, we have done them in the past and I think it sometimes like made a motion. So just if the council wants a resolution, I'll get that ready. Because I have one from some previous contract that you signed. So it's up to them.
Do you all want a resolution on that?
I prefer what council tells us is necessary for that. If a resolution is better than, it certainly creates a paper trail, which is probably a good thing for the executive branch to have the idol.
I don't think it's necessary.
It'd be, yeah, five years.
Yeah.
But if council says that we don't need one, we'll have it in the minutes as a motion and recorded.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'd really prefer a resolution. It's easier to find for people if they want to look it up, if they're looking at the timeline.
And I think council said we have a...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
I was just gonna say, I think you said you had a template. So maybe that's the smoothest path forward is just to modify one, a past resolution that's there.
What I was gonna say is if you don't do a resolution, it just, yeah, but just make it really clear who makes motion to authorize the mayor to sign that, to say that you're making a motion and that a resolution wasn't prepared and that you're going on a motion. There's nothing in the charter that says it has to be a resolution. That's just always the way I've done it. So it's really up to this council if they want a resolution.
If we don't have a resolution, would it be okay to just make the motion, have it in the minutes, but post the contract on the city website for it for people to find?
The contract's public record, so if anybody wants to come in and get it, if there's, I don't know about posting it online, that's not my department, so I don't know what all you do. But if somebody wants it, all they have to do is ask for it, it's public record.
Yeah, and it adds an extra step, but whatever.
Where are you at, Micah?
I'm good, move forward without a resolution.
I like the resolution, but I'm okay without it. If we carefully word the motion in advance, I'm okay with that as well.
I don't see the need for a resolution, let's just do it.
Yeah, I don't think...
Okay, we'll just move ahead and we'll just do it by motion. Let's go ahead and move to Resolution 3546. There's a resolution to adopt the stormwater facility improvements, engineering for that. We do have the engineers here to do a presentation for us. So we'll turn it over to Brandon and go from there. Hi, Brandon.
How are you?
Good.
Voice, you can get up to that corner shirt? That would be great. Do I need this on or?
Not because I'm overweight, take your jacket. You have to take your jacket.
Okay. Did you have that set up? James?
That's the one we pass, right? Now, don't put all your stuff next to my stuff. If you still work with your computer, why the computer, right there?
You can just minimize that on the screen and then do it.
That should be bottom of the tab, part of that PowerPoint. That's the very bottom, the orange circle. The next one. All right, as the mayor indicated, just kind of going through, giving you guys a quick update on the preliminary engineering report that was completed for the stormwater. We had, I was asked to keep this short, so I'll kind of run through this as quick as I possibly can here. I think a lot of you were here for the last one, the last cycle we did this was in 2018. So I'll quickly run through a background of where we've been with the process and then a few snippets from the P E R, kind of highlighting what was found and then funding options, potential funding options for the stormwater improvements and then next steps, immediate next steps for what we're here for is the T sub grant application. So the city identified the need for the stormwater. Previous to 2017, it's been identified in other planning documents. But we were brought on in 17 to look at the stormwater as a whole for the city, identifying the deficiencies. And the city actually started in 17 with going through with their camera equipment and TV lines and identifying cross connections, which is probably the top priority that you'll see in the P E R and getting something set up for the stormwater, disconnecting those cross connections. 2018, when we started the P E R process, found out early in 18 that City of Red Lodge was eligible for a T sub application. And so we got all that stuff put together quickly and got that submitted in 18, in June of 18. And then in 19, they came out with funding and there was two portions for T sub funding. Red Lodge was funded under House Bill 652, you received a $500,000 grant. We started in 19 to trying to meet startup conditions, which we had the party management plan, we had the updated budget and the updated schedule. We were just missing the financing part of that. So we worked through trying to set up a district. And then what had happened is the resort tax increase came up and trying to figure out how that was all going to work, so things stalled out. We found out in early 2020 that all the money that was allocated to House Bill 652 was used up. So we lost out on that grant. And at that time, we had started working on Phase Two, but we redirected to modify Phase One and resubmit for Phase One improvements for the P E R. A little bit about the P E R, primary points of P E R are to identify the deficiencies of the system that you're analyzing, evaluate alternatives, recommend improvements, and then develop a funding strategy. So the deficiencies that were identified in the P E R were the cross connections to the sanitary sewer, existing infrastructure being undersized. You notice that by surcharging mammals coming out and that nature of things. And localized flooding, which was mainly allocated to no infrastructure in those areas. You see ponding and flooding on streets. And then general maintenance issues, the fact that there's no funding for it. So there's really no maintenance being completed. These charts here, sorry for those online, you can't see me highlighting it. But so this here, I need to get updated inflows from Jim, I'm still waiting for that. You guys got a new system, so that would be nice to use once we get it. But this was from 18, so you see the snow melt during the day. You get increased flow in the sewer plant. And then during night, it stops. And that's pretty cyclical as the snow melts around here. And then this was May of 18, there was a large rain event. This is kind of what your inflow for your sewer should look like. And then boom, you have a big rain event. Next day, another big rain event. And you're seeing these big spikes, so that just shows the cross connections and validates the cross connections to the sanitary sewer. This here allowed us, the mapping that Jim did and then us coming out and analyzing the system, allowed us to identify the problem areas. I think there were 16 identified. These red cross hatch areas are drainage basin areas that have inlets in them that drain to the sanitary sewer. And these are the primary needs for this P E R. And the funding is disconnecting these large areas that are all flowing into your sewer plant. This area up here was identified for the same reason. There's potential for it to be cross connected. And that was an area that hadn't been TV'd by Jim yet and that needs to be completed. And it was identified for Phase One improvements. And so going through the P E R process, it allowed us to look at each problem area and put a cost associated to it and then run through a matrix, a decision matrix, to help us prioritize the improvements. And what kind of filters out all of that is we looked at the whole system, so we, you know, the total improvement number was $11 million, which is financially feasible for the city to tackle that. And so what we did is prioritize them, break them down into phases. So here we have four phases and then a kind of a lump sum down the road. Here's the future phase, which could be one phase, it could be three more phases. That's to be decided. But the primary thing we went after and that we're currently going after is Phase One. It's 2.6, it's just rounded up to 2.7. And then as I talked about those phases, this kind of shows you how that broke out. The red phase here is Phase One. As with all gravity systems, you kind of got to start at the lower end and work your way upstream. And the Hagan Avenue main drains this whole area of town. A large portion of the lower level of the city and downtown district all goes this direction into Hagan and outflows down here into Rock Creek. What we did different from the previous application to this application was based on water main improvements in Hagan, there's a lot of utilities and conflicts. And so what we did was deflect that up to Platte or proposing to go up to Platte to avoid a lot of those conflicts and get the size of pipe that's required in the street a little bit easier. And that actually helps reduce the other phases by shortening the length that we're running to tie in. We're not tying in down Hagan now, we're tying in Platte and collecting everything. That was a quick run through, I guess, any questions that come up, feel free to ask them. The funding scenarios that we looked at, the P E R looks at a whole gamut of funding options for the city. And what we wrote it down to was two primary ones that fit the stormwater, what the city's likely to get. That being a T sub grant. And we looked at an RD loan and an SRF loan. Both of those options have, both RD and SRF, SRF has forgiveness, which we didn't show on here, and I'll get to that in a second. And RD has a grant eligibility as well, and we didn't show that, just trying to show the worst case scenario. We looked at a T sub, which will be a $500,000 grant with an RD loan, T sub with a SRF loan. RD, you're looking at a 40-year, SRF, you're looking at a 20-year. And then we show, we have, as part of the P E R, we have to show if we didn't get the T sub grant, what that would, what that would cost. And so as you, as we break that down, you see how you can't see that. But your packets, this table was in there, it shows the Phase One project cost, $2,671 and change, rounded up to 2,672. We show a $500,000 grant to rescue, go into RD loan, breaks it down to 2172. Yeah, so this is broken out to the capital costs. And then we also have an O and M that was added in. And so we broke out the two fees. So if we go RD at 40 years, and James, I noticed the typo, but I didn't send you the update. The, this is calculated based on what your current rate for RD would be, which is like 1.8, 1.875 versus what that says is 3.125, which is what it was last cycle. Something to consider, I know the city likes to kind of go to the shorter terms, get things paid off as quickly as possible. And so that's option would be SRF at 2.5% for 20 years. If we come down to the infrastructure side of things, RD broke out to be a cost of $3.43 per user. So what we looked at for users was the city limit boundary and all the lots inside of that was 2,082 users. And so that's just the annual loan payment divided by those users, just that $3 on the RD. And for that in SRF in 20 years, that goes up to $6.34 per user. As we come down to the maintenance portion of it, that's the same across everything, comes out at $3.40 a user for a total rate for the stormwater district ranging from $6.83 to $9.74 if you went with SRF with the T sub grant.
I thought I heard you say two of those are possibly eligible for forgiveness. Who determines that and what would the city have to do to qualify for it?
And when we, so I'll kind of get to the process moving forward. But we apply for SRF loan at that time, we can apply for that forgiveness and they'll determine if it's eligible. The reason we didn't show it is when working with those agencies last cycle and this cycle up to this point, they've kind of indicated there's nothing that lines up well with stormwater. I mean, they're suited for water and wastewater.
But forgiveness?
Yeah, the SRF, so, and that's, I don't know, it's not a full loan forgiveness, it's another $500,000, I think, on SRF. And then RD has a grant, which is, I think the way they're structuring it, we choose like a 22% grant of that total cost, which would be substantial for that, for that phase improvement. And that again, if we went that route, that would be applied for when we go after that funding.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, so part of it is, one of the advantages of the forgiveness is they're not like the grants. So if it's a grant, you apply, but sort of lots of other people and maybe you get it, maybe you don't. The forgiveness, if you meet the criteria, then automatically you get it. But what I hear you saying is, because it's stormwater, there is an uncertainty as to whether we'll meet that criteria.
That is true, that's correct. Yeah, there is an unknown, stormwater is just kind of starting to work its way up into this funding. You know, mainly it's been driven, T sub has strictly been water and wastewater, some solid waste, and then bridges.
And we know this actually has an impact on our wastewater, because that's been part of our discussions.
Yeah, and that might be one of the things we can leverage into getting that SRF.
Is that it will, it may qualify as a wastewater improvement even though it's stormwater, right?
We did recently have an SRF loan that was forgiven on Hagan Model 1 project,
Right.
which was simply with 300,000 or 400,000 of forgiveness.
Yeah. And the other thing, the reason why I broke this out this way with the maintenance being separate was if the resort tax increase, if I'm saying that wrong, excuse me, but if that's passed, that 1% would cover this amount, whether it's this line or this line, doesn't matter. It would cover that amount. And so what you would like to see is the maintenance still set up so that there's a maintenance fund and the improvements that you're making are being maintained moving forward. So there would still be that maintenance fee, but the resort tax would cover your loan for the infrastructure.
So the 3.40 per month plus 6.83 per month, or let's, let's leave the worst case here, the 3.40 per month plus 9.74 per month. So you're looking at...
No, no, the 9.74 is total, so that's the 3.40 plus the 6.34 above.
Okay, gotcha, okay. So the 9.74 a month, is that the amount that we could move forward with this? If that was an additional line item on the utility, 10 bucks a month per lot, occupied or not, would need, is what's needed to do this? And then that number would go down with the passage from the voters of the 1%. Is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Interpretation?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. The other thing to consider would be the additional phases you have. So this is, that 10 bucks is Phase One. But the 1% would allow you to get Phase One, maybe Phase Two done without doing an increase moving forward.
Can you speak with other towns within Montana that you have worked with? When we first looked at this, it seemed that most were comfortable with and we thought it was the direction we were going, where it could be a line item on a monthly utility bill, which is what I have seen in past lives as well. And yet, some of the examples we pulled up were like an annual where it was stuck onto the taxes instead. Are you comfortable with either a... Are you comfortable with either approach and can assist if we go with the line item utility?
Yes, um, so we kind of started that process with the bond council and it's just figuring out. The best route for the city to go, whether you want that as a utility or you want it as a tax. Either way is feasible.
And if I recall correctly, it seems like one of our drivers was burden on the front office and which, which way was easier in the front office, is that a correct? Recollection or was that not a? Like, like if it was a line item on the water bill as, on the utility bill versus the taxes, that made, that put it monthly, but. My recollection is there was a concern if we could do it without unduly burdening staff.
Right, I think the taxing is a little easier, but.
So taxes easier on staff and then maybe line item is easier on that payer, maybe, those are just, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Robert.
We had a record snowfall in February, right? This winter, I was just wondering what that did to the treatment plant, um. Dealing with that, that kind of water and what the cost was.
Yeah, that'd be great, great question for Jim.
Jim would have that info as far as like the, the usage for that monster and stuff.
I know he's been slammed, I've been requesting stuff for him and he's been slammed with all, you know, keeping up with snow removal and all that, and so. Just still trying to get that info. Uh, mainly just to see what the inflows were is what I'm concerned with and then. He'd be able to explain, you know, what the implications were with sewer plant costs.
We were quite fortunate that we didn't have any heavy rain or snow events or extreme helping days.
Yeah.
It was pretty gradual.
It was very gradual, I know Jim did say that.
Yeah.
Just watching on my corner, there was a drain that, that we found. Then across the street to the, to the east. Went away at the same length of time, um. It was Ken Coder, he said back in time that that, that we have the dirt area where we, where we park. A lot of water absorbs right into the ground and I just, I think of, there was a fourth of July. Up on sixteenth or seventeenth, and there's a downpour and my Volkswagen with the sunroof folding. Across the street, it looks like I'll get swept away and wrapped, it's, I'm trying to be dry. And, and I hear down, is it on Hagan where the water comes up through the?
Yeah, it's on Third and, Third and Hagan.
You were saying you're gonna try and divert?
No, and so what's happening is, um. Hard to read, but again, your packet, Hagan Avenue, so this first section would go from the outfall up to, um. Sixth or eighth? Eighth. The existing infrastructure in there is twenty-four and eighteen inch. The proposed based on, um, sizing on a ten-year event is fifty-four inches of the outfall. So you can see how undersized that pipe is and what that's doing, just causing it to back up and causing that to blow off, so once we upsize that main. The water's passing through there without surcharging out the manhole, so that's, that'll go.
First, the first area that you're.
That'll be phase one, yeah, like to get that main, the main one, uh, addressed.
Jim kept mentioning it's being able, able to separate the stormwater from the sewage water.
Yeah.
We just send it on in with the creek and don't have to treat it.
Yeah, yeah, so you'll be treating a lot less water. Trying to get this rapid here, uh, we kind of went through this funding, we wanted to propose as phase one only. Uh, going after the $500,000 grant, as we discussed, the rates depend on the funding package that finalized. Uh, whether it's R V, S R F, and if we get those grants, those R D grant or that S R F loan forgiveness. Uh, so lastly, the project schedule, kind of critical items here. Uh, as part of your packets, you got the, the draft resolutions, uh, for the T set and P E R, um. What it, the original schedule for this thing was we were supposed to have, um, public hearings, we had advertised for all of these items, uh. April, yeah, March, end of March and, and beginning of April. And those obviously were canceled and so now we're starting to open back up and. This is kind of a, this needs to happen because our, our deadline hasn't shifted, we're still June twelfth. So we are doing this hearing right now, just so you guys are aware of what's going on, the resolutions that are presented before you. Once for the T sub applications, basically just gives the mayor the authority to sign the signature page and then you wanna, they. It stays in there committing funds, uh, but there's still, I mean, if things change. When that funding becomes available, you don't have to take the, the T sub grant, um, simple as that. Uh, and then the P E R, there's language in there, there has to be a, a formal public hearing. Uh, we will advertise, uh, we change the language, say we presented the P E R here, but then we're also gonna present it at a later date. And we'll do that, so those resolutions need to be signed at the next council meeting and then we will incorporate. Them in and get it to the T sub application and submit that on June twelfth. Like I said, we'll advertise then, um, I think we were talking sometime in July, hopefully everything's back to normal. Or semi-normal, we can advertise a full public meeting and hold that, um, and that. What the Department of Commerce has allowed, extended that deadline to has been August, um, first, first of August. So if we do it in July, um, get any more public feedback, participation, um, and we can incorporate those comments back in and submit T set.
So just, so what I hear you saying is we can pass the resolution to adopt the P E R. Prior to the public hearing where normally we couldn't be able to.
Right, and I guess we modified the language in there saying we'll have another. And the reason that we're comfortable saying you guys do that is this is the same P E R that was already adopted.
Is it just one public hearing or two that's required, just one? I'm, I, I guess part of my question is, is there a reason we couldn't do the public hearing? In two weeks and just do it via electronic methods and still check that box off as part of our?
Because we can't advertise the two weeks prior that are required.
As it would have had to have gone in.
Would have gone on the paper last week. Would have been to the paper last week, advertising this week and next week to hit.
And then, then assuming that which would be adopted would be the updated ones, because you, you mentioned a couple of, um, on the, uh. The updates, I have the, there, there's a couple of pages that you mentioned specifically that Jim had updated numbers. And we've updated, would those be in what we were adopting and approving at that time?
Yep. Yeah, so it was just a pretty little chart that shows, hey, this is what's happened between eighteen and twenty-twenty.
Yeah, there, there were, I apologize, there weren't page numbers and so.
And the other, the other. The other big change from, uh, the original P E R was the original, we showed, you know, going down here. Cause there was hopes to use that existing crossing on Rock Creek and, and maybe use this abandoned lagoon as a, a storage. And so we had the outfall coming all the way down to Rock Creek, that's being revised to. We're getting rid of like a thousand feet of pipe right here and dumping it into the M B T outfall in the ditch. Uh, and the other change is instead of running the main up Hagan from fifth to fourteenth. At sixteenth? It's gonna, at fifth, it's gonna go up to plat and run down plat just due to the. Utilities that were in Hagan that we encountered doing waterman.
Yeah, I just, I had made note and we weren't doing questions at the time, so I just made notes on the deficiencies page. And the identified problem areas page that you said there was updates expected, so. Those will be in time for us to, to adopt.
Yeah, and so what you're looking at here, the identif, the. This is the updated figure that's in the P E R. The only thing we need is Jim's output from the sewer plant. The inflows from the sewer plant, sorry.
Robbie?
Is that why we got the pump truck back in time is to keep those lines cleared out?
They do a lot of that, yeah, like that word by your house.
Gotcha.
They're gonna get down, because they have them already.
Is that the, is that back truck?
It went over during that big storm the other day and the sidewalk in front of the guy on the corner is. It's so broken up, the grass growing up, it's like little lebys holding the water back and not even getting to the drain. But it's only backed up about five feet into the next layer. I was hoping that they could put like a, just a sawhorse caution marker or something, nobody drives under that thing.
All right, and then continuing forward with this schedule, um, we do those hearings, um. We'll pass for revised resolutions as needed, mainly for the E A. And then. There's a gap here of what happens, funding will become available sometime June, July of twenty twenty-one. We'll find out if we're successful on our T sub grant, uh, then we need to work to meet startup. Or we'll apply for the S R F R D application at that time and. Uh, work to meet startup conditions and get the T sub grant in place, uh, so design a phase one would start in the fall of twenty twenty-one. And construction sometime in the summer of twenty twenty-two.
How long is phase one projected last, just a summer?
Yeah, I think one year they should be able to get, it'd be a long construction season, but they should get that all in in one season.
Robbie?
Does phase one get quite a bit of the, the, um, groundwater or the? That takes care of quite a bit of it, doesn't it, right at the, at the gill?
Oh, yeah, so it has, it's the most expensive because we have a lot of. Um, downstream pipe to upsize to get to Hagan. Uh, phase one will take care of this area, area one and area two that are cross-connected. And then, as I mentioned, you, you kind of need to start downstream, have capacity to dump additional water into, because every time we. Disconnect one of these areas that's cross-connected to the sewer, we have that additional flow now in the stormwater, so we have to have capacity. In those pipes to handle that flow, uh, so phase one starts here and runs up to eighth. Uh, disconnects these two areas. And then, you know, phase two is this green, it will continue up plat, we would disconnect this area. Uh, with the two different mains, and then phase three continues up plat and we disconnect this large area. There's, there's lateral lines that have to run up and connect to those inlets we're putting in to, to get it off the sewer.
Excuse me, could you say what streets those are as far as phase two, you, you said it for phase one? But you didn't say what's, what the numbered streets were for phase two.
Uh, yeah, so phase two. Is. Let's see, area three is Ninth Street, um, three eleventh, to eleventh and then plat to Word. And then running along plat. From eighth to eleventh street. And then phase three, um, will, will extend mains on twelfth street. Yeah, on twelfth street to fourteenth street and Broadway to the top of the hill or airport road. And then it extends the main down plat from eleventh to fourteenth and then also picks up. A new main on eleventh street that would extend from plat to Word. Yeah, so. The packet that was made available to the councils online, you can find this table and the, the. First main column of the area gives you a description of the streets that are affected by that. And then, uh, it also has a, a little bit better, uh, figure, it has the full-size figure of this image, so you can kind of see. What streets those, uh, mains are affecting, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I have a different question, is there a storm drain at every intersection?
Not currently, no.
I was looking.
A lot of it, I mean, you'll see.
The storm.
The storm, the general flow, it, it kind of goes, uh, starting north is that way, so it goes. You'll see it running east and then turn the corner and it'll go down a block or two to the north and it'll find an inlet. And that's how it's kind of picked up and that would kind of be the same. Philosophy moving forward, there's not a, a necessity to put an inlet at every intersection if there's. Surface drainage improvements that are adequate to, to convey it to an inlet.
You know, over the last thirty years, I would notice it's thirteenth and plat where the. Um, cable TV and all that is there on the corner. Usually there's a lake in that corner. I, as I walked down here tonight, it looks like at some point in time they filled that in. Looks, the elevation is way higher and I don't imagine there is water standing there anymore. Back in, you know, things like that, low spots and.
Well, I think that, that's kind of speaks to all the, to what that, uh. Resort tax increase, it, it, it addressed stormwater as a whole and, and allows for. Stream improvements, curb and gutter is a stormwater improvement, those, having those inlets and having stuff there that identifies them and maintains that grade is critical. You see, uh, it not being maintained over the years, you have inlets that are. You know, a foot below existing grades, you have stuff coming in and, and it drops off into the, the inlet and then those get covered up and filled in with leaves and. And don't drain, so those improvements are critical and, and maintenance of those improvements are critical.
Can you, speaking of the one percent and curb gutter rebuilding streets, can you clarify a little bit on? The eleven million dollar price tag for all of the bases? What, uh, what part of that eleven million is for rebuilding streets that are tore up or curb gutter, anything like that?
So in our estimate is strictly stormwater, that eleven is stormwater improvements and what we. Included in our estimate was what you see for any utility project is a ninety-foot pay limit, so it would come up and pave the street. Or repave the street in that limit, that's what we included in our estimate and, and mainly because there's no. The T sub grant doesn't, isn't gonna pay for those, those type of improvements, it's strictly a, a water sewer storm kind of underground infrastructure. Related.
Curb and gutter included?
No.
To get, to get the water to the new inlets?
Yeah, so that, they wouldn't see that as, as, uh, an app, uh, applicable. I agree with you, stormwater in a, in a sense, there's surface components that are curb and gutter inlets. So we have inlets accounted for, we have repaving where the utilities are.
So it does include repaving that nine-foot stretch.
That's, yeah, yeah, exactly, it doesn't, it does, so what? What needs to be accounted for and happen, in my opinion, is, um. Once you have your water, your sewer and your storm in all your streets. Then you come through and say, okay, we can pave or create a typical section that is gonna be applied throughout. Red Lodge and if it has boulevard sidewalks, curb and, and apply that throughout and then you can come through with that. Because you guys identified in the language of the, um, one percent. That those funds could go to that, uh, and so these estimates here don't account for curb and gutter. Uh, and so these estimates here don't account for curb and gutter or repave full road. But that's something, we can certainly provide a, a cost per footer. Look at that if you, if you'd like us to look at those as well. We've strictly limited the, the P R to the underground infrastructure, the inlets to get the water out of there.
James, do you have any idea what, what needed to repave the city?
Well, yeah, I do. I have our capital improvements plan, I think puts the, the cost at about 60 million. That's rebuilding all the streets in the lower section of town which are deteriorated and they have so much new asphalt that's been layered on top of asphalt that it really, they, to really be fixed, they need to be rebuilt. And so rebuilding is per block is, isn't the magnitude of going a million dollars or so. Yeah, per full street.
How effective will the new stormwater be without the curb and gutter to get the surface water to the new inlet?
Yeah, there needs to be surface drainage uh, incorporated. So it would be when it's designed, it would be designed to, to looking at installing curb and gutter and at least have uh, a graded swale that would get water to those inlets more effectively.
So curb and gutter got to follow pretty directly.
Yeah, and that's something that could be tagged on right with the design. And it could be designed that way if that's how the city wanted to move forward. Um, it was just left out of the P R strictly for funding um, portion of it, so. That's
Robbie?
Yeah, I ran into Bob Pitcher last winter, last fall. At some point, his mom's house right across the street here, he mentioned with the fact that there is a curb. Um, every ten, it's all downhill, going in that direction. The, their sidewalk over there is a sheet ice, pretty much all winter, no way around it. And that's pretty much all the way through this town, like you're paving and paving and paving.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. This is Mary Cameron. Um, so if phase one includes the, the stormwater infrastructure, which it, and, which includes the nine-foot paving of the street and that phase one's going to take that one year, 2022, that summer. Then does that include the curb and gutter and sidewalks? Or do they do all phase one, two and three and then come back and do curb gutter and sidewalks?
Uh, that, I guess that would be up to the city to decide if, if the infrastructure, water sewer, the other infrastructure improvements are in on those blocks and we go through with storm, then I would say, yes, they could do the other curb and gutter sidewalk, full road reconstruction at the same time. So that could be part of the stormwater project.
Would, would you think one of the determining factors on that be if that additional 1% passes for funding sources? Or are there other key things you think? Is it, is it basically boiled down to dollars?
Uh, yeah, well, exactly that. Uh, I think if that's passed and, and the, the funds are available to, to complete those, then yeah, you could complete those. So everything at this point is pretty much money's game.
I got another question.
So?
So early on in your presentation, you talked about that you probably wouldn't need, we probably wouldn't need to implement a utility fee or a a special tax district for stormwater until phase two or three. But that estimate didn't include any curb gutter sidewalks, correct?
Um, no, I what I was saying, um, I interpret your que- question correctly. This uh, line item for the infrastructure here, the, let's just go, let's just start with SRF, the second column. Um, the infrastructure portion of that district would be $6.34 per lot. If the, if the um, 1% is passed, that would cover this cost. If it's not passed, then in order to move forward with phase one, you need to implement this cost with the, of maintenance fee for, for the the district, just like there's a sewer maintenance cost and there's water maintenance cost um, for the total um, utility rate of uh, 974. And so if the 1% is not passed, then this would have to go through.
So Brendan, if I may, it wasn't that this isn't necessary, but this cost could in part be defrayed optionally.
Yeah.
Um, with the 1%, or this could still go into effect and start to be working toward phase two and I mean, because there's going to be, there's going to be dollars involved throughout the process. This, without the 1%, this is what we're absolutely looking at. With the 1%, we can optionally look at defraying some of this cost because of the 1%.
Exactly, exactly. Does that answer your question?
Also, come on before what? Tell, tell me again what the, what the monthly charge would be for this first phase.
Uh, assuming
I can't, I can't read this.
Yeah, assuming we get the $500,000 grant and we go with SRF for 20 years, that's 974.
Per month?
Per loser.
Yes. Per, per lot, empty or occupied.
Correct, that, so, yeah, that's exactly right. We, we just looked at the city limits, pulled the, the parcel count within the city limit boundary at 2082 and divided that cost.
You said nine, what was it, nine? 974. 974, all right, call it 10 million, just easy. All right, so a question for Lonnie, I guess, is, is it really exceptional? Does it, is it going to add a, would it add a lot of extra effort for staff to build this out on the monthly charge?
Rather than
Well, through our, through the system we use, um, there is a way to add a line on there and stuff. Um, we're worried about like as far as someone not paying their bill, I mean, how do you have to collect?
You kind of have no recourse.
You have no recourse to collect on something like that, whereas in taxes, I mean, you have to pay your taxes or properties taken by people. So I mean, I guess every option has to be weighed both the cons. And you know, those are, the stat time though, I, I honestly don't think it would, but then we have to look at if, I don't know, assuming everybody would have water and sewer service already or an account set up. Um, that would be another thing that would have to be
But you're saying that this applies to unoccupied lots as well? Yeah, and, and then part of what Lonnie is saying is, so if it's a tax bill, it's automatic, it's on their taxes. If it's a utility, then you have to get a judgment in order to get that applied as lean on taxes. So it's a sec, it's a two-part process. So it is considerably more problem, okay?
But you know, more, more
Yeah. The other side of that is it might be easier sell to the taxpayer not to call it a tax increase and put it on a utility. Well, that's what I was getting, getting at, but if it ends up really, I didn't, I wouldn't be thinking about the collect, collection aspect of it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, to wrap it up here. And that is something that would need to be looked at as you move forward with the, the utility structure, I'll call it. And depending on what happens here in the next week or two, I think you'll find out on that 1%. Um, those things are, are moving part. I guess the, the point of this meeting was to, to update the information on the P R and, and, and get the, the okay for moving forward with the TSEP application. Uh, and again, it's, it's not, you're not committed. I mean, we're, we're moving forward in a, in a, a new world here and trying to get through this process as we can and get those resolutions passed and it still can be backed out of in the, the future.
Yes. So Mayor, administratively, um, I see two resolutions specifically, um, and, and possibly a third, but I see two resolutions that we need to bring forth next week. Um, I'm, I'm thinking probably Mike is the most appropriate person to put that forward since he works with Jim. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Um, and then the, the second part of the question is and i- if I may, just because we haven't jumped into the, the next one here, which is the, the application for the TSEP is 3545. Does it matter or would it make more sense to number than, and we're talking about accepting the study and then doing the bid? Would it make sense to flip those two numbers um, chronologically just so that they go in the order of actions that we're going to take?
I, I think when we present it at council, we could do that. We can change those.
And, and I had some comment on the second one, but I'll hold off and get there.
Let's go ahead and, and is everybody in favor of carrying the resolution 3545 forward? That's accepting the P R.
That's 3546 currently, but if we called it 3545, it would make more sense.
Correct.
And, and to reiterate, there's language in there saying another public meeting will be held that meets the Department of Commerce standards uh, for public hearings, so.
Is everybody in favor of carrying this forward?
I have no reservations.
All right. So let's go to the one that is now, that is still numbered 3545. And this is uh, submitting the uh, application for the TSEP. Questions on that?
Mayor, I have an issue or, or a question. Um, uh, in the therefore section, currently the second says that the city of Red Lodge commits to provide the amount of matching funds as proposed in the TSEP application. Um, a- a- aside from just wording choice and cleaning up, I'm wondering in my mind, it would be better than saying we're committing now, if it said the city understands they will need to commit matching funds as proposed. Because that way, like I said, things change if things are there. To me, it's just that if, if the cleaner language, we, we're saying we understand we're going to have to make a commitment, but we're not. That's still going to be up to future budgets, future councils, and you know, whenever that comes into place. Hey, this isn't going to go forward unless a commitment is made, as opposed to us making a commitment that's multiple years in the future. It seems to me in bigger language.
I'll add, um, just, um, I'll have to check with the grant people to see if that language is acceptable to go in for TSEP. Um, and and then, yeah, I, I have no problem changing that. We'll just, I'll get back to you before next council meeting whether or not that, that would be
Okay, yeah, and I said, I, I want to make sure we meet the language, I just, I'm, I'm just not sure.
I mean, so the language that you see is pulled directly from Department of Commerce, our TSEP application guidelines. They have an example, this is what we want to see, so that's what we used.
And I think we have your email in here, right Brendan?
Yep.
Any other comments on the TSEP?
I, I have one, this is Mary Cameron again. Um, wouldn't it be wise to, to know what the matching funds are needed and to start putting them aside right away, even if the 1% passes? Does it say that in the, in the resolution?
It, all, all it addresses is that, uh, on the matching funds and we don't know what those matching funds are until we make the application. And I think what so, what Brandon says, you know, if we get it and we don't have a matching fund, let it go.
Right, yeah, well, that's exactly what happened in the last
That's what happened.
Yeah. So, so we need to get on putting aside matching funds ASAP, correct?
Yes.
Well, it would be ideal to set up the, a district or a, uh,
I think that's
I guess a, uh, right, I'm trying to, the means for you guys to facilitate that, that needs to be set up. Whichever direction you decide to go, it would be better to do it now than later that way. I mean, e- even if it started now or started next week or a discussion went a month from now, after it's submitted, if that's moving forward, so we're not in the same situation as last cycle where we lose that funding, that would be ideal.
Are, are we making a request for a specific dollar amount or just for a grant?
Just for a grant, and so based on based on your guys' um, target rate and median household income, you're eligible for $750,000 grant from TSEP as a maximum.
Okay, so would, would it be a within, like come back and say, well, we're not going to go that much, go 400,000, six hundred?
Uh, not typically.
Well, either you get
Yeah, and the, the TSEP grant is a, is a 50/50. So if you had, which isn't an issue in your case, when you're looking at a $2.7 million project, just six and change. You're, if you had a, a million dollar project, you would have $500,000 grant and you'd have a $500,000 match. Does that make sense? So that's what TSEP is, is a 50/50 match, you guys are exceeding that match. Um, and, and typically they don't I guess, do a lower grant award typically, you either get it or you don't get it.
Okay, so we're looking at, what is it, like 500,000? That's it? Either we get it or we don't get it.
Yeah, yeah, and then, uh, I mean, if you start your, your rate district based on these numbers, that would be great. You start um, saving money up, uh, for the, the capital costs. But once we apply for SRF or we go RD and if we get the forgiveness, I mean, you're going to have less principal balance that you're trying to pay off.
And if the
So Brandon?
Because that could, that could be used as our matching funds as well.
Yep, that would, that would cover all of these one.
Brandon, what's the, uh, due date for the application?
June 12th.
Okay, so we got to get on it. And those are awarded in even year, so it will be awarded in 2022?
Um, they're two-year cycles, so we go in this year, it'll be awarded next year in 2021. And then in 2022, their next cycle opens, so you could reapply for phase two.
So we're applying for 500,000, is that what you said, or 750,000?
500. That's what Red
So then we, so then we need to have 500,000 to match in 2021?
Yeah, you would have to meet startups, you would have to have that. You could, you could cover that match by a loan. So you would just have to have a district set up to show you can cover your, your loan payments. Um, does that make sense or answer your question?
No, but that's all right, whatever.
So you would have to show 500,000, but we can borrow it and we could borrow it against either the 1% or against a district or against an incoming utility.
Correct.
Any of those three that would allow us to secure the loan would, would cover our half of the project.
As long as they're in place.
Right.
Correct.
Any other questions on this? Move forward? Okay. Moving this forward, if you're going to do your part, get that information to us on that one line.
Yep.
And, and Jim, you worked in here earlier, but there were two pages in the P R that he's indicated he was waiting for updates from you to have it be updated.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, moving forward, uh, professional service contract and extension for Great West Engineering, uh, discussion.
I can, I'll just add that with the engineering contracts, we can do three-year contract, uh, and then we can do a two-year extension. I can, I'll just add that with, uh, engineering contracts, we can do three-year contract, uh, and then we can do a two-year extension if we want. That's state law. Or in solid ways, for example, you can do a five-year contract and then you can do a two-year extension. With engineering, it's three years and two years. Our three years is up at the end of June. Uh, we can do two more if there's a break left, uh, before going out to bid, so. Basically, we do three years, do a two-year extension without going to bid, and then if we extend it for two years, then we would have to go to bid at that point in time. I'll just add that I personally, and I know Jim is, is very happy with the work that Great West is doing for us. We, I think both would really just like to see an extension.
I would too.
They've been outstanding.
Brandon, if you were on the other side of this fence and you were going to another city? And you were trying to talk them into sending it out to bid for three years rather than waiting five, what would your, what would your logic be?
So say that again?
So if, if you were on the outside looking to get in? And you were talking to a city that was in three years, looking at a two-year extension or putting it out to bid? What would your argument be to say this is why you should put it out to bid and let, give us a shot at it?
Loaded questions.
Can you think?
I'd like to go to that. If you want to.
Uh. I guess it would be. That you'd get a different perspective, but you're giving up a lot of experience and, and, and knowledge of your system that they're going to have to relearn and take. Two or three years for them to relearn it. It's not that we've, we haven't just been here for. Three years, we've been here for eight, eight.
So, yeah, so the, so the pros and cons, I think you actually summed up. So. The pros are by extending, you maintain the institutional knowledge. And you already have, your incumbency has an advantage. Um, and then, uh, the outside is first is a, first is an outside perspective, but you guys have already won that contest once too.
Right.
Okay.
Everybody good with moving that forward?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to resolution, uh, three, five, four, seven, uh, requesting distribution of bridge and road safety program funds.
Sorry, Mr. Franklin, sorry.
Ronnie, you want to kind of fill some out?
Sure, so this fund is, um, the, the H P four seven, it's free for distribution of gas tax funds. Um, it's the new, the, the other funds besides your other gas tax ones that can lose towards, um. Infrastructure, for streets, sidewalks, uh. So this year, um, we're requesting, I mean, right on the, the, the exact amount that we're being. Um, but the project Jim decided to do was the sealing of the crack there at the country club states. Um, and he's already gotten some bids for it, so this resolution is just to request those funds to be released to the city so that we can move forward with that.
Isn't that just standard operating?
With this new, the new bill that they asked for, these new gas tax funds.
Yeah.
So, um, and then in there, we generally put, uh, matching funds would come out of the resort tax, um, but it, it's three thousand dollars is the matching amount, so.
Is that the little crack where the asphalt is come over and touch the curb?
Yes.
Yes.
And so.
How much money do they, do they need?
So.
Um, our, our lowest bid is like fifty-eight thousand. Between fifty-eight thousand and seventy-five thousand of the four bids that I got.
And the amount of the, what, what is available this year to drive is, is more than what the bid is coming out to, so.
It just seems like in a, on a list of priorities. That little crack, there might be some weeds growing out of it or something. You know, instead of looking at the crack, they could like look at the mountains, surround them. Instead of focusing on that one little, you know, when we paved. Basically, I used to live on that street for a little while. Um. The street before it got redone was probably ten times better. Than anything downtown. But it just, and then when I heard after that got paved, that that little crack was a problem, that's, it's just crazy.
Okay, Dave?
I'm, uh, very much in favor of this and thank you, Jim, and, and part of the reason that I will just add for context. Um, for those who weren't on the council a couple of years ago. But, uh, we asked, uh, all of the residents up in that neck of the woods to pony up several thousand dollars. Over the next fifteen-year payments to, to, to pay for the road construction up there in Sid. And one of the things. Um, that as a, as a representative from that ward, that, that I came for and then asked was. Um, if we're going to put that money in, the city's making a commitment, they're going to put forth the money to maintain it. And make sure that it doesn't degrade before we have it paid off. So to me, I see that as holding, holding true to that commitment, so I'm very happy with it.
Jim? I was going to say, when I went to that pavement, uh, schooling about it, like I said, when you have them dollars to use. You're better off to use it on something you can save than try and do a patch. Or something, you know, like when we did White Avenue last year, something you can save. But like I said, this is the point, if we seal them cracks up there, we should be good for seven to ten years. Of, of keeping those streets in good condition where we need to do. Complete repave downtown, it's going to take more time. Like, one of the things that will happen with this storm water. When the storm water comes through, that'll be the time to do the paving and curbing on the streets where the storm water goes. And it could work into that bit, so. Uh, that's where we chose, I chose to try and put this money was to. Benefit those streets and give us more time on that.
So are we all okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, move that forward. Uh, TBIT budget for discussion?
No, I, I have. Can I back up just one question on this? Is the con, is the city required? By either convention or legally to take the lowest bid on something like this?
I think, I believe we are.
Required to what?
Take the lowest bid. I'm pretty sure we are as long as they meet the criteria.
Yeah, unless, unless there was a sufficient reason to not take the lowest for, for company.
Yeah, we have to take the lowest bid.
You're, and you're, so the question needs to, are you satisfied that the lowest bid?
Very much the lowest bid, the company building asphalt towards the lowest bid. They've done a lot of work for us and they've all, I've always been satisfied with their work.
Okay. TBIT budget, twenty to twenty-one budget. You had a chance to redo that. This is a formality. Um, this is something they have to give us their budget. I thought it looked really well. Uh, any discussion on this?
Looks pretty straightforward to me.
What, what is the action, Mayor? Is it, is it similar to accepting the P E R? We're just accepting their budget?
Right.
Is everybody in favor of moving this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Dave?
Lucky I didn't answer at all.
Okay. We'll move that forward. Use the city on land permit, farmers market, uh, discussion on this, please.
Just so you know, I emailed, I texted, uh, Sammy Wex, their representative, um, a couple of minutes ago, and said she might be. We should be ready in about five minutes and we got through that last bit so fast.
Okay.
So she's probably a couple of minutes away. Uh, but as you know, as many of you know, the farmers market has been at large part, part of few years. Um, they had issues in the past with trying to pay the monthly. Um, more recently, we have the in-kind services, um, that can be provided to offset their use in the city-owned land. Um, they have for several years in a row now helped prune trees, uh, particularly on Broadway and the entrances of town. And they're proposing that they do that as their in-kind service, um, as well as, um, take care of the restrooms as they always have. Um, and. Now I got for now. Um, I guess I can add that I have emailed Sammy as well, the, the county health department's, um. Guidelines and contact information for how they can better be prepared for COVID times. Um. The nonprofit that, uh. Provided hand washing machines at both Moose Trails and, uh, the playground across the Boys' Girls Club. They have stated that they are fine with hand washing station at Moose Trails being moved for the. Uh, farmers market for just their period of time. They expect them to move it themselves and then move it back afterwards, or they're able to do that. Uh, in talking with Sammy, their plan is to take up more space, um, to. In recent years, they've only used the upper space of Lions near the gazebo and they would move. Some of their vendors down below where soccer and Red Lodge ice use, use that area, so.
And that is for spacing purposes.
For spacing purposes, not because they expect a lot more vendors.
So my understanding, and it kind of went with you, um, what you said right now. Last time we talked about it, we weren't going to change our format at all, but what we would do is. Basically a motion to approve based on compliance with any current county regulations. That's how it'll go forward.
Yes.
James, because I don't know what's involved with the pruning of the city trees and checking on bathrooms, are you of the opinion that that is, uh. That'll compensate for the fees that they would pay?
I am comfortable with that. Um, I know in talking with Teresa Whistler, who, she's very involved with. A lot of the trees in our parks, city right of ways, um, and the help that they've gotten from the farmers market. The time that they put in, um, that yes, it is well worth it for us, for that hundred dollars that. They put in a lot of hours and they still can't quite get to all the trees, but, um, I think it takes maybe a couple of years for, for them to can say get. To all the trees on Broadway and all the smaller trees in parks, but, um, they put in a lot of hours each summer for the last.
It's reasonable compensation, absolutely.
And James, were you basically the check off on that? Are you the one who says, yes, you have met the obligation? I know the council has put forth. Some, some pretty generic, you know, we've left it flexible, but are you the one who signs it off and says, yep, we're good?
Yes, um, I can do that. And I, part of that is, is me just working with some of our volunteers, like Teresa Whistler in this case, who, um. Helps kind of oversee some of that, so speaking, you know, I'm going to have to kind of depend on her to say, hey, did they put in the hours? Cause I'm not going to be out there a long time.
James, I, I personally think that the, that the farmers market has a great deal. What's going on in the city during the summer. So I'm in favor of it, but are there any negatives to the pruning?
Uh, not that I know. Um, I've never fielded any complaints from neighbors. Um. Um, really no complaints at all. Um, you know, the, um. What they offer for the residents, I think, is, is worth it for us to, to allow them to use the grant.
And, and you had safe, uh, appropriate sage precautions to make sure that they weren't puncturing. Um, sprinklers and that the heavy equipment and stuff, but that might be a little bit of your question is, so.
Yeah.
There was, there was some, um. That's what I'm looking for, mitigating. Conditions upfront to help make sure that damage does not happen.
Yeah, we've had, and not necessarily from farmers market, but we have. I've heard conflicting things about stakes being driven through the ground, so as we do ask that they don't do that.
And then, um, Councilman Cameron has reviewed these in advance to, right, she's.
Did email.
Um. The Department of Health and Human Services has put out requirements specifically for farmers market. Do you know if they've? If the farmers market has looked at those?
Yes.
Sammy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, is that what you're basing your plan on? That you're going to submit to the county?
We, uh, I just out the mitigation plan that this afternoon submitted it.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
So then, okay, cause it's coming up pretty close. It's about what, two and a half weeks away?
First market on June nineteenth.
Okay, three weeks.
I think with the motion, as we discussed it, we'll just say specifically as compliance with any current county requirements. Because that leaves the flexibility and if the county adds or takes something away. Then it's understood that they'll comply with whatever those requirements are as they add to it.
Well, and, uh. The Department of Health and Human Services, you know, could be different. I don't know, I don't know. I guess we'll look and see.
So are we willing to move this forward under the conditions that we just talked about?
Yes.
Well, are we going to discuss it when we have? I mean, that's in two weeks, so we should know whether or not the county has. Has given them the okay.
Right.
And what the plan is for. So I'd say let's put it on the discussion and then let's put it on for action at the seven o'clock meeting. That's just my preference.
That's perfect.
Is, is there, is there a way? Uh, Councilman, that, that you would change the wording, because right now everybody's saying if it's approved based on compliance. Is there a way we change that wording so that you're more comfortable? Because maybe that.
Well.
Final stamp of approval is given on a weekly basis or, you know, right before the event, because my recollection, last time I read it, is they couldn't approve it more than two weeks out.
Yeah, well, it won't be more than two weeks out, Dave, because our next meeting isn't till the ninth, and. That's only ten days away from the farmers market.
Okay.
And if Sammy said that they already submitted it, then, then we should, we should be able to know by the ninth. So it won't have to be conditional on anything. We can just look at all the information.
Well, except for that it has the capacity to change during the, the summer too. I guess I, I'm not articulating my concern. Is there a more blanket? Statement we can use that increases the comfort level, but still flexible with things changing? And not changing?
Yeah.
I don't know, let's discuss it.
I, I.
At the next meeting.
Point, essentially, the, the guidelines may change throughout the summer. And so if we approve something based off of the exact plan and the requirements from the county health department change. Um, then they're in conflict with what we approved. So I'm personally, I think it's a good idea to, to basically. Condition the rule on the health department's, um, approval of their current guidelines.
That, that's like exactly what I was saying.
Okay.
So you want to, but you want to move this forward to the work session for discussion before council meeting and then have it on the, the agenda for councils?
I think, I think that's a good combination.
I think it's a good call.
Jesus Christ.
Good move forward? Okay. Sounds good. All right, um, do we need Becky to come down?
Yeah, I just texted her to see if she wanted to switch, I'll just go.
Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to have Rebecca come down and be live in the chambers now. And we're going to talk about ordinance nine, five, two, administration of resort tax discussion. A way for her to get down here, so.
Are we taking James for, you know, back as though we did?
Well, we only got room to tend, so. You're only supposed to have ten, so here we are. Pretending not.
She's bringing the dog, that'll be eleven.
No, no, I'm still.
They still on camera? Talk about.
Okay, this is for discussion. Uh, I know. Rebecca, James and Danae have spent a lot of time on this, uh, a lot of great input. Danae does all the, the bookwork for this, she had great input on it also, and so here we are today. Anybody want to add to that, Rebecca?
Um, no, I guess for the council's information, I'm trying to find exactly which section. Over in the bonding requirement. We have sometimes the same businesses over and over that are getting notices every month. Or every quarter when their taxes are due, so, um. Trying to give a little bit more teeth to the ordinance to get, hopefully encourage them to pay their resort taxes on time. At this point, we changed some of this stuff in the bonding requirement so that, um. It could hopefully, um, be a little bit encouraging. The, what happens? What has happened in the past, the way it was done, Danae would send out a letter, a friendly reminder letter the first time. Then if they didn't respond, then the mayor sends out a letter, um, reminding them and a little bit more forceful. And then the third letter I send out, which is, we're going to take all this. And then the third letter I sent out, which is, we're going to take all this action against you. There's nothing in the ordinance that says that. So what I kind of recommended, because when we, we all don't have time to constantly remind people of their civil duty, that they're supposed to pay the resort tax, I just said, let's stop. I mean, that's not part of the requirements of the ordinance. So I sent out, I sent out five letters Friday for five different businesses. Most of here are repeat offenders. They'll come, they just, they get letters all the time, reminding them of their resort tax and that they would not get another reminder that in the future, if they didn't do their tax, pay their taxes quarterly like they're supposed to, that we won't be reminding them, that we're just going to take the action that's under the ordinance. And there was one thing that we can do, some of these repeating offenders can be required to post another $500 bond. Currently, you start a business, you pay a $500 bond, after a year, the cities give it back. There's an option there to hang on to that for eternity, till that business closes. And then if they leave and don't owe a tax, then they would get the refund of the bond. You could set a number of years to hold that bond, because it is a lot of trouble, a lot of work trying to collect it. And it comes to the point now, if they don't pay, they will be getting possible criminal charges in city court. So we're just trying to make it easier on all of us, because it usually takes me and DePey and sometimes even James involved in collecting resort taxes.
This has nothing to do with this latest law in the business downtown. These are repeat offenders.
Oh, yes, yes.
It has nothing to do with the last three months.
No, it's nothing to do with. No, Mike, these are, these are businesses that I have been dealing with for four years.
Okay.
And it just makes it easier on, well, it makes it easier on Danae, makes it easier on me, makes it easier on everybody. And I don't want to have to go file charges against people for not paying resort tax. So, and that's one reason I had added in here about asking that they separate the resort tax. I don't know if people don't understand it. The resort tax is on top of what you're charging. So resort tax.
You're the city, they're cut.
Your grocery sales, you know, it's like you buy a hundred dollars, you get 30% on top of that. And so I had, we had talked about, James and Danae and I, about putting something in there to kind of require the business to separate the tax into one account so that they have that money available. Because I kind of think what's happened is if the businesses are doing well, they may open that tax to kind of help themselves, play along. And we need them to keep that tax separate so that it comes to the city quarterly like it should come to. And we don't have all the collection costs. So I had included that in there as a change as well, hopefully trying to get some motivation there to get paid on time. And I think that was about some of the biggest changes that we made. And that's something actually Danae and I had talked about, yes, for two, for three years now, is trying to get a little bit more teeth into that ordinance. It, it would be maybe a little bit easier to, to enforce from her standpoint. And, and we did go through and clean up. There were places, it's a business entity and swap back and forth. So I think we got all of those cleared up. The biggest part of the ordinance was used, the current one for this upcoming one. And so everything said, I'll make sure no dismiss. And it added like, we, in the ballot language that went to the county for election, it defined, I mean, we had emergency services as part of that language for, on the resort tax, but there was no definition for that. So I took the state definition and added, it had cleaned up grammatical errors. And I guess I got all the language, but all the part of what is tax is exactly the same as it's been with a couple of amendments over the years. And we did, on the audit, one thing I did on that, I needed to make that a little bit clearer to businesses that if they don't pay on time and their 30 day grace period has passed, they're required to have an audit. And every letter I send is, you've got to do this, and nobody ever does it. So we need to kind of get a little more ability to enforce that. And that's why I changed that language in there too. I think I said on that one, you know, they'll get their notice from the Labor Department Police Department that their business license is revoked, and then here's everything you must do in order to get your business back. Just trying to get them to comply with, so that if you wonder why, that's why that's in there. And then if you've got questions, I'll be glad to answer for you. Danae said, if y'all had questions for hers, that she's the first leg of enforcement, that she would be glad to come to the council meeting and, if there are any questions that the council had.
This is Mary Cameron. I got a question. Could you, for our next meeting, could you prepare a list of the last four quarters? And how many businesses did not pay on time? Or it doesn't have to name what businesses they are and what fees were charged, what interest was charged, and what efforts were made according to the existing ordinance that went out? The existing ordinance pretty much addresses paying on time. I mean, I would, I would rather put in there some kind of reward for paying early, which Montana Code annotated provides for, than punish them even further. Collecting a $500 deposit and holding on to it until the end of their business days in Red Lodge doesn't seem like it's the best practice. I know when new kids move out of the house and they, they write, they enter into a utility contract with Northwestern Energy, they have to pay a big deposit and they get it back with interest if they pay their bill throughout the year. At the end of that year, they get it back with interest because they've proven themselves. And I think that is the, that's the purpose of having that $500 deposit, so that people pay on time and they pay their taxes and they prove that they're worthy. You can hold on to it another year. That is in the existing ordinance. You can make an agreement with them, say, hey, you were late, we're going to hold on to this another year. We want, we want to give you the opportunity to, to prove your worthiness. But I don't think that having the staff decide, some people are going to, are going to pay this $500 and we're going to hold on to it forever, and some people are going to get it back after the first year. I, I just don't think that's the best practice. So I, I'm not sure that that needs to be changed. The other thing is with the 30 day grace period, that is designed so that people can file for an appeal to the council. And the council is the governing body and they can say, if these people apply for that during, during that 30 days, the council can say, okay, we're going to put you on a payment plan. And that is the council's job. That is not the staff's job to have to make those hard decisions. And those decisions need to be made in a public meeting with a public hearing so that everybody gets treated fairly. I'm just, I'm really, really bothered by the changes that were suggested or proposed by the staff. And I think that at this point, we need to make a few corrections, because there were some references to some ordinance sections that didn't exist. And certainly we need to correct those. But I think the, the only other changes we need to make are those that the Resort Tax Board came, came, came up with, the 3%, the changes in, in what it's going to be used for, the 1% for the stormwater and everything that, that includes. And then the other thing was, that was totally changed, was the creating, creation of the Resort Tax Board or Resort Tax Committee. I think it's referred to as a Resort Tax Committee. And it changed from the council appointing that board with a maximum of one person being outside the city limits to the mayor appointing that board and with no mention of people having to be inside the city limits. And I think that's just another thing where the, the job of the council is being taken away from them. And I did send out that proposal and I would like to have it discussed at the next meeting.
May I address those, Mr. Mary?
Yes.
First off, the 30 day grace period is for shortly after you pay quarterly. So it's January, April, July, October. So you pay quarterly your resort taxes. And I think that is also aligned with when federal taxes are also due. Is that right, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay, so the 30 day grace periods, if you can't pay your April 20th, when you have 30 days, which would be around May the 20th, to get something worked out with the city. If you don't, then interest and the penalties and everything gets assessed. The only appeal to the council is for if Danae assessed a penalty and interest and the resort taxpayer does not agree with the penalty or interest, that's what comes to the council, not the resort tax payment. So that's, Mary's incorrect on that. It's, it's, it's kind of confusing, but you have to read it. You have a 30 day grace period. The only thing appealed is interest and penalties by the appeal section that would come to the council. That wasn't touched because that was, nobody spoke of that. The resort.
Excuse me, it was not a 30 day grace period. It was within 30 days. So it could be on either side. People know when their taxes are due.
Mary, that's enough. Take your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. The Resort Tax Advisory Board, I think I may have worded it different ways. I put that in there and highlighted it for a reason, so that y'all could look at the two possibilities of, the Resort Tax Committee still needs to be there, but I think what the Resort Tax Committee kind of recommended was like keeping an advisory committee around all the time so that they could advise the mayor if they saw problems with it, any kind of changes that might want to come up later down the road. So it was basically an advisory committee that's around. And then you have your Resort Tax Committee that is in here that would be appointed when it comes up time to every five years to review that committee. So that was the difference in that. And I changed the number on this and I'll explain why. Because we've got, if you read the top of here, so many ordinance numbers over time. And so for clarity and the fact that we're actually making a significant change because we're adding a 1%, I thought this would be a really good time to get away from First Amendment, Second Amendment, because then next year you might, or two or three years from now have 901, Third Amendment. And that's where I think sometimes things can get confusing to the general public looking at it. So I got, wanted to give me the next ordinance number and that's where I did the 952. So basically, all the other ones are going to be voided by 952. And this will be the only one that has to be referenced from here on out until this one's changed. Or it maybe gets a First Amendment, and then if it got a First Amendment, you might want to kick it over to a Second Amendment. I mean, if First Amendment on 952, then you might want to switch to a totally new ordinance number. As for clarity for quoting it as letters, legislation, whatever. So that's why that was done as well. So if y'all have questions, and James, if I don't have all the answers, James can help with that if he has to come back and handle. And that's just why things were done the way they were going, because of the enforcement problem. And yes, people know when their taxes are due and regularly every quarter, we send letters out that says your second, third quarters due. Sometimes it's all four quarters are due. So this wouldn't affect the businesses that do what they're supposed to do and do on time and pay like regularly. This is kind of the, the more teeth in the enforcement's for the ones that we're constantly having to remind or constantly having to revoke a business license. I mean, and, and I think Ms. Cameron asked for all the, all the businesses done. I don't have time to go through my file cabinet for everyone I've done for the last three years, but it is repeat offenders. And I will represent that to the council just from the number of letters I have signed, the businesses that are involved. Some of them have now gone out of the business and we are pursuing our options to collect. I'm the ones that are no longer here in Red Lodge in business. So it's, the only ones that's going to get penalized is going to be the ones that constantly are offending and taking up my time, Danae's time, James's time to tell the general public, these businesses, this is what you're supposed to do. And, and they know that. So that's why it's a little, changed a little bit by us.
Does it, federally, you can wait all year long, time to pay your quarterly's and then you pay the back fees. Do you have an issue with, with that? As long as they're paid once a year and they pay in the fees and the penalties? I'm just curious.
I don't know if it has something to do with the change or. Well, because that federal is on a calendar year, I believe, quarterly orders.
Yeah.
Where resort tax, we're a fiscal year, so our orders are split up. So you have a third and fourth and one, third, fourth.
In one year.
Yeah, yeah. So in.
In one calendar year and not a fiscal year.
And not a fiscal, okay.
Good. I, I appreciate letting counsel finish speaking. I would, I would like to hear if, if Councilman Cameron had a follow up. But I wanted a clarification, because I'm not sure I heard two different things being said. So when it comes to the deposit, I, I guess, first off, I'll state, I agree with the concept, I mean, going back several years, that one of the things that was asked of counsel was that we take the decision-making process, the particularly anything that was, you know, the subjective, that what we, instead of asking staff to make subjective decisions, is the council provided clear direction. So I do agree that what we need to do is provide, this is what will be done, this will be done, so that staff, whether it be the front office, whether it be council, is just applying that which we've passed. So going back to the deposit, that what I heard Councilman Cameron describing was something I'm very familiar. You go get a utility bill and you, 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 you have to put a deposit. If at the end of the year, you've been current, then you get your deposit back. And in her example with interest, I don't have an issue with that. If you had missed it, you don't automatically get your deposit back. And I think I heard you, counsel described that that's the same here, right? If, if, or is that automatically articulated where?
It's in here that after a year, it's given back. And sometimes new businesses are doing great that first year and then things drop off. If the council has a problem with the city holding it for, till that business is in operation or something, put a time limit out more than a year. Because what happens if the business doesn't pay the resort tax? What happens is that bond is used to satisfy the resort tax. And then if it's more resort tax than that $500 bond, then the business owner's going to have to pay the difference. If it's, say, 400 and they've got a $500 bond, the city takes that bond money, pays the resort tax, and they still have 100 sitting there, and they would have to make up that 400 to keep that $500 bond in place. And it actually is in the current ordinance that for these, for when we have to go forward with pursuing some type of collection, that it added that their bond is supposed to be extended for five years. And that was something that we're going to start doing when we have to do this. That was in my letter the other day, that this is what's going to be required from here on out. So Dave, to answer your question, you know, if, if you don't want to do, you know, the entire time, maybe to say a five year, because I think in five years, you're going to know whether your business is going to make it or not going to make it in town.
So what I, what I heard you say though also was, sometimes somebody is good for whatever the period. So whether that be one year or five year, to me is, is inconsequential. You also wanted to be able to say that we could request that they re-up a, a new bond in order to contain, in order to get a business license reinstated, they have to re-up again.
Yes, and that's actually in the current ordinance as well as in the revised one. It's in 901 amended in 952 both. I left that in there, the only, and I just marked through as a recommendation that, that it be extended, you know, and I marked out the five years, but you could put five years, you could put 10 years. But it needs to be, it's there and we've not been using that, so that's the next, you know, we're going to have.
Okay, and, and so I, I agree with the logic that we need to make it clear so that staff can be put in a position of making a subjective decision.
Yeah, and that, that right there, that was something that we both looked at the other day and was like, oh, wow.
And then like, I, I was curious if there was any.
There's a way to do it.
Questions or that were left unopened that, like I said, I wanted, I wanted to hear what Councilman Cameron had and if there was still outstanding questions or if they were addressed.
One thing I did do, let me just take this, I noticed this when the first time I had a look at this ordinance, we were talking about penalties that was in section 2 dash 4 dash 15, and the ordinance didn't have a 2 dash 4 dash 15. So everywhere then the ordinance. So, everywhere then the ordinance that reference section fifteen, I went through and fixed that, but I just go and pay for it, so you'll page it out when I, I may have missed, so I'll fix that as well.
Yeah, I'd like to, I do have something else. Um, what I heard, what I heard Becky say is that, and it is in the, in the ordinance in nine oh one A, if an entity violates this section, and the city must pursue the bond, cash bond, or letter of credit for unpaid taxes, bonding requirement under this section is extended for five years for the offending entity. But what I heard Becky said is that they're not doing that, but they're going to start doing that. So, that's already in there. I, I'm just really opposed to somebody starting out and we say, we're going to hold on to this five hundred dollars until you are done with your business. We got in kind of a little bit of hot water with utility fees, that that was happened when we couldn't find, you know, I don't know what we had, fourteen thousand or something dollars, that we couldn't find the people that we were supposed to give those back to, those water fees. Um, and that's a, that's a concern, because we, I don't think we want to get back into a situation like that. The other thing is, is that a business to file an appeal, it just has to be within twenty days of that quarterly, on the twentieth of the third quarter or third month. Um, so if they come to the council within thirty days of that, either on the front end or the back end, whatever, and say, you know, I'd rather make my resort tax payment annually, I think the council could listen to them and come to a decision about that and direct it for that business, if that was also the recommendation of the staff. If the staff say, yeah, we could do that for, for these folks. Um, I think that it's really important to keep the council in its role and to take those hard decisions onto the council, so that the council gets the heat and takes the heat and not the staff. It, the, the council, the, the staff people, if people come in, they say, I can't pay my taxes, I don't know what to do. You can say, here's the appeal process, I want you to file this, we will schedule a pub, an open hearing at the next meeting, and you can plead your case. And I just think that's, that's the way to do it, and that's the way that it's written.
Is your understanding that appeal is just about the penalties?
The other, the other thing that I had an issue with was the city directing people to put their resort tax in a separate account. And while that is a great idea, and it is a best practice, I don't think it's the city's place to tell people how to manage their accounts.
Dave?
Okay, Dave, what do you got?
Um, I, I had a, a question and a comment. So, the question was, did your understanding of the appeal to council align with what the city attorney described as having to do with regard to waiving or not waiving the penalties and interest, or did you see it as more than that? And, and if I misstated, counsel please clarify, because I know you said that the, the appeal to council was just in regards to penalties or fees, correct?
Yeah, it says in two four eleven, any business may appeal to the city council any assessment of penalty or interest. And that is probably a different trigger, because it says it's thirty days after the notice of the determination of the amount of penalty and interest.
And so, my question, did that align with the part that came to council? Or did you see it as, or did you understand it to be more than that?
I understood the changes that they were proposing to be different than that, to be within that thirty days, which is either way, within thirty days of notice of appeal, could be thirty days before the deadline, or it could be within thirty days after the deadline. People know when their taxes are due.
And they don't, and they still don't pay them.
And, and, and I guess my comment-
The consequences, you know? I mean, then, then we, then we follow the ordinance. But what I'm also hearing from you is, these things are in here, these consequences are in here, and now we're going to start following them. Plus, we're going to add these other ones.
Dave?
It's, it's pretty clear, it's pretty clear, and it would be so much easier for staff to be able to say, well, here's the ordinance, and here's the, here's the process that's in place. You can appeal to the council, and they will listen to you. And the staff will make a recommendation, and then the, then they'll make a decision, and it'll be all, you know, out for everybody to see. This is public business, this is public money, this is, this, this should not be done quietly and, you know, picking winners and losers. We need to be, do the business of the public in public.
Rebecca?
Um, Dave, what, I think what happens is, in the past, Danae sent out that letter, just like, hey, your taxes are due. At some point in the process, the penalties and interest is assessed. And that's different from, you know, here's your resort tax, and it may say like, here's the penalty and interest. Is that how it works? So, they are still obligated to pay that resort tax, but if they didn't agree with the penalty or interest, then that is what comes to the council, and the procedure for the council to do is all there. And they have thirty days from the time they get the penalty and interest assessment to appeal to the council. So, that's a very simple process. I don't think people would ever question the, the penalty and the interest.
Quick order. Mayor, I noticed it is eight o'clock. I moved, we extend this meeting to conclude the, that we extend the meeting to allow us to conclude the discussion on this item?
Yes. Is everybody in favor of that?
Give me a second.
A second.
You know, we aren't voting here, there's no work.
Oh, yeah, there we go, okay.
I mean, is that, does that work for you?
I'm good, my packet died, but.
Okay.
Oh, mate.
All right. I thought not a head here in this room to extend it, so.
I, the other, the other, the other comment that I had wanted to add to that is that I'm really, I agree with coming to the council, but having said that, as, as a council person, um, that's one of those decisions, whether we extend to one person and not extend to another person, which falls under that quasi judicial umbrella, which we are not covered for under by insurance. So, I'm going to be really inclined to stick to exactly what the ordinance says. So, I would say we should think long and hard about what the ordinance says, because that's... Anybody who votes and does something outside of that and grants immunity and out of the kindness of their heart also opens their up to, themselves to legal recourse, so. So, I think we ought to, I agree that it should come to council, but I think we ought to, we ought to be careful in our wording to make sure it includes that which we want to have these going forward.
Absolutely, Dave, I agree with that, and I think that, that's why it needs to be done in public and not at the, at the discretion of the staff. Because we do have a process in place, and it sounds like, you know, that maybe they've, they've had some trouble following it, but it's pretty, it's pretty clear. And then as far as putting more teeth into things, I don't think adding harsh words makes it any clearer. I think that an automatic audit is an automatic audit, and we don't have to say it's a mandatory automatic audit. But that's whatever.
I think what, what Dave, Dave's point is a very good one. But it seems to me that, according to what Becky said, we're, we're not talking about a huge number of cases. And I would like to think that a town this size can, I mean, I can see two, two basic reasons why somebody wouldn't pay their tax. First, they just don't want, in which case, we send the police department over there. Or they have, there's some issue, I mean, is, you know, they've had a hardship or sickness or god knows what. So, I think the council should have the ability to, to look at each case individually, since we're talking about a huge number of cases. Dave's point does make, we probably should have some wording in there that would protect the members if we were, you know, to treat, I don't think, I don't like to use the word treating some people differently than others, but coming to a different conclusion based on circumstances.
Mr. Lyman, one of the things, under two dash four dash five, the payment of the tax, I've got it in groups, I can't remember if that's something that we added. But usually what happens if a business comes in or calls and speaks with Danae and they're having financial issues or whatever, it more than bends over backwards to work with people. I mean, the ladies on stairs do, I mean, people with the water bills, I mean, they do if they can to help people out. And so, that's one reason I added four, is that you can call if it's in that thirty day grace period and set up a payment arrangement. But we don't want that to happen every single quarter. And, you know, there's Danae's responsibility on the part of merchants.
I understand that, and I, I would say that if, if it suddenly, let's say, became a problem, say, oh, well, we used to have two or three a year, or maybe not even that, and all of a sudden we have ten, well, then we, it's a different procedure, but I don't think, I don't, it just seems can't, it can't be that much of an issue. I mean, people, you're right, people, you, you, you have to pay your taxes, you pay your taxes, but, um, I'd like to leave some, I'd like to leave some area of individual the responsibility to, to, to deal with circumstances that we can't anticipate.
And a lot of times when that's a number of circumstances, yeah.
And, and this is well within council's purview. I mean, that's our role, is how do we come up with the wording that is going to do that? So, if this, if this wording, if it is the consensus of council that this wording falls short, let's come up with some alternative suggestions to describe what our intent is, and then we can seek council's help to make sure that it's phrased appropriately.
Okay, I agree, and I think what, I think what you're saying is, we don't want to be in a situation where, say, appears to get preference treatment or business fee or a similar issue.
Yeah, unless you can call out some demarcation about why you made this way here and there. Rule number one in business is consistency is what keeps you from getting sued.
And one of the things too, it, it's down to the point that I had to send out the le, this is a, I had to send out the letter. A lot of times businesses, you know, as soon as they did it, they'd call, and we would work out how they were going to get it paid or caught up. So, everybody worked, everybody in the city works with the businesses, because we want them to keep earning money and making resort tax. So, we all work with them on that. Um, I, I wanted to address a couple of things Mary said about hanging on to the bond a little bit longer or hanging on to it. The water fees that she was talking about, that was stuff that was long before, I think, computers were here.
Right.
And there was no record keeping. What I talked with Danae about is if we held on to the bond longer, is her first spreadsheet of whether they pay a cash bond or whether they put up a surety bond. And she would have, and then I said, we would need to probably set up an account, put just bond money in and hang on to that, so it didn't get mangled in with general fund money. But so, if somebody gets their bond back, it comes straight out of that account back to them. It's that idea we had on that. So, the, the water fee thing was ancient.
The bond, that's, do you like, currently?
They are into a whole separate-
Yeah.
A cash account fund. They don't mingle with account funds.
It gets no coming, like, that's already in place.
Right, yeah, so it's, it's already in place to have those bonds totally separate. So, when we receive in funds, they hit a totally different account.
Oh, like?
And when those bonds are paid out, it's out of that same account.
Is that the cash bonds or the sureties?
The cash, cash bonds.
Okay.
When they're received, yeah.
Becky, could you clarify for those of us who may not be sure of the distinction between those two terms? You said cash bond or surety?
You can put a, if you're starting a new business today, you can, you gotta cover, you can pay a five hundred dollar cash bond, or you can purchase a surety from an insurance company that ensures you, it's kind of like an insurance policy.
Okay, so it's a bondsman, basically. You, you, you pay them a premium and they put up the five hundred dollars. But either way, the city has five hundred dollars, or do, does that company put up five hundred dollars?
They basically guarantee that you're going to pay.
They guarantee the five hundred, they don't necessarily provide.
No, and then if the, if the business didn't pay, then the city can go after the surety, and the surety return and go after the business.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I got, I got, I got a response here. What I was talking about on that, keeping it in a separate account, I wasn't talking about the city. I was talking about a change that I think Danae had requested to the ordinance that the, that the business keep the resort tax that they collect in a separate account. And while that is best practice, I don't think it's the city's place to direct the, them where to keep their resort tax. While we're talking about resort tax, this is not a tax on the business. This is not a property tax, this is not an income tax. This is a tax that they collect from their customers, a resort tax that they collect from their customers that's supposed to be deposited with the city every quarter in order to pay for those infrastructure and parks and all of those needs that we have listed. This is not money that they can collect to keep their business going. We have the ability in the existing resort tax to extend those five hundred dollar deposits. To, if it's an ongoing problem, it's a chronic problem with the business, then we have the authority to rescind the business registration. We have the authority to take them to court. If this absolutely cannot be worked out, and if there's chronic offenders, then we need to deal with that. But I'm hearing that there's so many people that I cannot possibly go back and look over three or four quarters and see how many, how often this has happened, to the other extreme, well, it's only one or two. So, I just don't know why all these huge changes need to occur to the resort tax administration ordinance when we haven't really been following it for the last, I don't know, few years, from the sounds of things. I mean, that's just from what I'm hearing tonight.
Rebecca?
We have the ability to do this.
The part about the extending the bond was something that was just, in reading it, we missed. So, it wasn't a, you know, it was just, we didn't see that part of it. Um, but there's not like major, major changes in this. And to tell a business, the businesses are required to pay that resort tax. And what's happening is if they're short on money, they do pay employees or whatever, they're thinking probably in the back of their mind, okay, I'll just, I'll pay this resort tax next quarter. I'll just get it all paid. And then something may happen that next quarter. So, that's why, you know, Danae and I had talked about it, and if they just took that three percent amount, if it passes four percent, put it into a separate account, then they don't have to worry about paying that money.
What's wrong with that?
Sir?
I'm, I'm, I guess it's Mary, I'm hungover. Mary, what's wrong with that, requiring that those funny-
I think it's an absolutely good practice. I think it's the best practice for a business to follow, but I do not think it's the city's responsibility to write that into an ordinance, that they have to do it that way. It really is good, especially if you have somebody who's having a problem, you sit down with them and you can say, here, here's what you should do. Let me help you develop this. Let me show you how to put it in a separate, in a, in a separate line item or whatever, whatever they, a separate account. But they have to understand that this is not business, this is not money for them, this isn't their income. They are collecting it on behalf of the city. They used to be able to keep five percent of it, but we've eliminated that on the recommendation of the resort tax board. We can write that back in. If, if businesses say, well, if I got a little, you know, a little prop for, for doing this, I would do it on time. We could write it in that if they paid, you know, ten days early, if they paid their taxes, they could keep five percent, or they could get a five percent refund. Um, that's how Montana, Montana code goes. It's, it's up to the council to decide. If we want to, you know, reward people for paying early and give them a five percent refund at the end of the quarter because they paid ten days early, I think, I think that's a great thing to do. Um, a good book that collects a lot of resort tax would make every effort to do that.
We can't do that because I think the ballot language was to use, that we did the five percent property tax reduction, and then the rest of the ninety-five percent went to resort tax payments. So, there's no counts or-
We can do that, because it's in Montana code annotated that we can write it into the administrative ordinance.
I wasn't through, no. The, the five percent, that's, this ordinance says, we are going to give the five percent- we're going to give the five percent property tax, and then ninety-five percent comes to the city. That is what the voters will be voting on or have voted on. So if there, if the council wanted to come back in and undo something, then you're gonna have to go back to the voters to say, yeah, we want our five percent money back to administer all this for the city. So you're, you know, as long as, until it gets changed by the voters, if it passes now, it's that way until this or the new tax runs out or it's voted on and changed.
Dave.
Well, if, if the business holds on to five percent when they pay early, the city isn't collecting it.
Good, Mary. Dave?
So our, our objective is to move this forward. And so as we discussed, we need to, we need to reach conclusions and, and move forward. I, I agree with Mary that it is absolutely a best practice. I also agree with Mary that I am uncomfortable or, or don't feel the need for us to dictate how a business keeps their book within our ordinance. Now, I know Tom has expressed a counter to that, but I'm curious, we've, we've, we've heard both sides of this for a little bit. Let's do a, let's do a round robin straw man and see who's, who's okay with it and who thinks we ought not to include that section, and then let's move on to other topics.
Okay.
I think we have no role in trying to manage their money.
Dave, I think we have no.
It's not their money. Tell them how to manage their business, it's city's money, but.
Well, I mean, we have other regulations for businesses that have to do with health or lighting or shuttling, snow off the sidewalk, that kind of thing. I mean, I, and it is, it is the city's money, where if they're collecting it, it's for the city. I don't, I don't hold rules and regulations anywhere that anybody else, but. So I don't want to see all this come on the city staff and have to, they have to make the first call of that. It should be pretty cut and dry. We're not talking, we're talking about a small amount of money.
Robbie?
I heard people say today they voted against heavy resort tax.
So what we're talking about is in the ordinance we have in there, how they need to have it in a separate account when they collect it. Are you for or against that?
Against.
Mary?
I think we should make it as clear as possible and as simple as possible, so that everybody understands. There's no way we can write it so that every possibility would be covered, because everybody's gonna have a different situation. So I think it has to be written as clear as possible, so that everybody, including the people out there and us, but we also have to understand that there could be a circumstance that we cannot foresee. And we have to be able and willing to take those under consideration separately. But it has to be clear to everybody and simple.
If we have a business that collects twenty dollars.
That's finished around Robin, so where are you at on that? Do you want that already pulled in there?
What?
Do you want that in there?
Yeah.
Yes. Mary?
No, I don't, I don't want that part in there. I don't think we have any business telling a business what they have to do to collect their money. And we can certainly advise them on that, and if the staff want to advise them on that, I think that's absolutely fine. But I think putting it in an ordinance is a big mistake.
I had a brain, or a thought, listening to everybody's ideas, possibly put for the repeat offending in businesses that are constantly not paying on time, that they have to put it in a separate account. And maybe that would encourage them to not use it to fund the business.
So what I'm hearing is, is a modified proposal that, so initially you do your, when you get your business license, you put your five hundred dollars in. If you're good, at the end of that year, you get your five hundred dollars back. If you are an offender defined by two, three, four, then A, you have to re-put in on deposit, and at that point, you then have to set up a separate account because you have demonstrated that, that you're not. Now, I'm a little bit better with that.
I was just a thought.
And I think it's a good one, but, but the other thought that I have is, a lot of these people pay twenty bucks a year. I mean, this is, you know, we've got a relatively few number of people to do it, and, and I think it's an undue burden to tell somebody they have to go have a separate account if they're gonna be talking less than a hundred dollars a year that they, that they do. So I don't know if we throw in a dollar threshold within that as well, but, but, but at least that's a condition that they bring upon themselves rather than us imposing upon them.
She's down.
Today, you know, for instance, I was out back in the snow for a few minutes, and there isn't a resort tax, it shows up on a drink. But it's probably figured in, now they have to count to every drink they sell, that money goes towards.
So what we're, what we're talking about, Robbie, is that if they are late consistently, and we do have them, and they're refusing it, and so we have them put another five hundred dollar bond and request that they keep that resort tax separate on a separate account.
I guess that we have to.
Would you be okay with that?
Yeah.
I think everybody is pretty good with that, so let's rewrite that. Mary, are you okay with that? Sorry, I didn't get.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay.
And with that daylight, after a year of good behavior, then they come back off under their own reconnaissance again? Or how long do they stay on the?
The bond.
On the list?
Yeah, how long do you, how long do you have to have your separate account?
If they, by the current ordinance, they have to have that reposted bond, and it's for five years. I would say if you're gonna, to keep consistent, maybe do a separate account for five years in the bond.
And I think, quite frankly, that's an incentive to make sure that you're paying your taxes and getting them back too, because not only do you have to put up a new bond, but you don't have to have a separate account.
Yeah, and, you know, the one thing, and I do my job, so, but I just, the thought of having to take a business to court for violating, and you've got a thousand, it's up to a thousand dollar fine, and, you know, if they can't pay the resort tax, you might be paying fine. And so, you know, I'm trying to just, was coming up with ways to afford you that to do.
So I heard, I heard we've got that one, we can reword it and have everybody happy with it. Dave? I had a question, kind of going back to scratch. I noticed that this is one ordinance for both the three percent and the one percent, and I had two thoughts. The first thought, and, and this is just recollection, so I'm not gonna swear by this, but my recollection is that when we were researching this and looking at some of the other locales that had done this, West Yellowstone in particular comes in play to mind, I thought that they had done them as two separate ordinances. And I see a wisdom in that, because the three percent is a twenty-five year thing. So this ordinance applies to something that is a fixed period. The one percent is something that could come and change and be repassed and with a new project, and it, and it could go on. And in my mind, I see the wisdom of having two ordinances, even if ninety percent of the language is the same, because that way you could edit and change one without having to do the both.
I thought on that, Dave, that's a good point, when I was trying to make simplicity. But the one percent's only there, you don't say it, it's done, it pays off whatever it's supposed to, it ends automatically by law. So it's, you wouldn't have to do it unless we wanted to come back in and amend it. And I can expect, I can see years down the road, some new vote come up on that or something.
Do we know what the other locales are doing? Is there a way we can verify that?
I don't remember. I know we put, I know West Yellowstone, they put all their three and one percent in one resolution to go to the county. So I guess for the sake of just having all the extra paperwork, and there's not that much to say about the one percent, you know, except where it is specifically allocated for. So that's why I just put it all in the same thing.
And, and to me, it could even cross-reference and refer to this, to this one and say, all of the tax collecting and blah, 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 that'll follow ordinance sections up. I would, I would just like to get clarification on, on how others have done it, because I, I really see the wisdom of having it be two. But, but if other people are doing this one, then.
I'll have to look, because I honestly don't remember how they did it. But one section comments that, you know, that you have the one percent, and that the duration of it is till a project's paid full. And then, like I said, you, you may amend, ten years down the road, may amend that one percent for something else. And then you can do new ordinance, or you can just modify that one section, so I'll look and see.
James, can you, can you weigh in on this and tell us what the other communities are doing with the one percent and the three percent?
I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor. I, I do know that West Yellowstone, as of last month, was the only community with the extra one percent. So they were the only example. Now, Big, Big Sky just passed their one percent last month, I don't know what they're doing. But one difference, and that we're a little unique compared to most of the communities, is that we're doing our three percent or one percent at the same time. I think most, any other community doing the one percent is not extending or renewing their three percent. So not saying I think it makes no sense to do it separately in our case, but in their cases, it makes even more sense to do them separate.
Okay. And I don't, I don't require an answer on that, I'm just, I'm just raising the point to say research over the next couple of weeks.
I tend to agree with Dave, it might be easier to have two different ones. I will, I can say what West Yellowstone did, and even though much of it is gonna be the same, but to distinguish between the one and the three percent, because as you point out, three percent goes on and on, one percent being project oriented could come to an end.
And, and if we're going to amend it or change, the, the fact that at this one point in time, they happen to be renewing at the same time, is probably a very, very low likelihood that's gonna happen again. And so we should, we should look into our crystal walls and, and do this accordingly.
I'll look at this and let Dave know, whoever else wants. I'll just send them an email out, we're gonna find out if it's, how West Yellowstone did, if it was all in one or two separate.
True. The second question that I have is, in earlier discussions, when we were talking about the ballot language, my recollection and understanding of the council, council's intent, was that we were going to put a cap on the percentage that could be pledged on debt, and then after much discussion, it was changed to long-term debt. And the thinking at the time was that we didn't want to basically take away the ability of future councils to make funding decisions, because we had already promised and allocated that. And it was, it was a fairly lengthy conversation, and I, Micah had the percentages, and as I looked through my notes, I, I don't see that, but to me, that was something significant, and at that point in time, we decided the administrative ordinance was where we were going to address it.
And that's something we all tried to look back, and I know there was, I think there was a motion ever made, but James, I think, looked at that, so you know where.
Well, I had, I had reached out to James, and I was, I was going to come up with some wording, and I failed on that. My work schedule since he and I chatted has been fourteen hour days, and so I didn't get a chance to follow up on that. But I did have it in my notes as something we had talked about as a council.
And we couldn't, I don't, I heard that Danae wanted to look back, trying to find what that discussion was. We can look at that, and I looked at the code section, and off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly how that section was worded, but it was clear you could use the money for that, and I don't, and that just kind of, like, we're beginning with it.
Yes, and I guess my question is, A, does the council recall that conversation? And B, I mean, we are now at the point of putting it in place, what is, what is the intent of the council? What is the percentage? I said, I remember at the time, there was a conversation about long-term debt versus short-term debt. And I think the example that was given had to do with police carts, which are a relatively short-term lease. But, but what we didn't want to do was put future councils in the position that the last few councils have been in, that although we have a resort tax, it was already all allocated, and that current councils didn't have the ability to use the poor things, whether it be a pool, whether it be refinishing a park down in Lions, you know, the kids park. But we wanted to make sure that there was some protection of it. And so given we don't have that wording here, is it still something the council wishes to? And what are the thoughts about the percentage?
The percentages were forty to sixty percent. I was on the forty percent. What I recall from the discussion, the rest of the council was on the sixty percent side.
Dave, let me look at that, and I'll try to get you an answer before the end of the week, but let me look at it and see if it's something that, when it becomes an issue, if this passes, then we might could work on the language and put it in there. And if it's something we can do after.
And in my recol, well, I will say that I'm uncomfortable with doing it after the fact. I just, I, I'd like to get it right. And I, and, and what you're providing is what I do remember, but then at the secondary position I remembered to that was that, that the sixty percent was long-term debt, but what we didn't clarify was what constituted long-term and what constituted short-term. But it was, it was the same sort of logic as going and giving that to everyone, they don't want to have a hundred percent of it given away, because who knows what could happen? You may could have a year where some weird bug shows up out of nowhere, and suddenly resort tax isn't what it was supposed to be. And you don't want to have all of that obligated to payments.
If you get with maybe Thursday, March court night, and we can make.
I would not be able to Thursday, in fact, I would not be able to sooner than a week from Friday, it would be as soon as possible if I could.
A week from this.
But, but, but it doesn't have to be me, you've got six people here.
I remember that conversation, Dave.
We all remember that, we just remember.
And it was sixty, so, so.
There's an appetite for it as well.
Yeah, so it was sixty percent long-term is what I recall, so we need to come up with wording that folks are gonna feel comfortable with. So individually, if you've got, what I'm hearing is, everybody's still on board with that concept? Yes, no, purple?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So we need to come up with some wording and figure out how to do that. And if council wants to take a stab and, and staff, and then, and then if council can come up with it, I know this is a big hot button for Micah, and I, I agree completely, but I, I believe in giving, giving things to the passionate, say, come up with something.
If you think of something, just email me, and, I mean, because we, we just, we can find anything other than just it was discussed.
Laurie?
Since I'm on the resort tax board, I can work with, while you're not available, I can work with Rebecca to see if we can come up with some kind of wording.
Yeah, and, and it might be worth reaching out to Tom and that committee too, because I know they, he was the one who, if I recall correctly, expressed some concerns on making sure it was limited to long-term debt. So he was, I think he had some, some good thoughts on that, he's had a good business, mind joining him.
And it was originally called Resort Tax Board, then Pete kept calling it a committee, and now it's been called a committee. So it, but it's the same group, and it's the same people. And since I'm on that, I, I should be responsible for working with Rebecca to maybe come up with some kind of wording. But we will include Tom.
Dave, did you make some over discussing it or something?
I, I did, but when I've gone back through my scribble copies, I'm not finding it. So what I'm wondering is if it's in an electronic copy, because I have a mix of.
I was gonna say, if you had doubts of what was discussed or something.
But I, I'm, I'm pretty, I have a pretty high level of confidence, it was sixty percent, but it was limited to long-term.
So you two are gonna work on that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll follow.
And maybe grab Tom or one of those, Dave had been talking about restricting, I did recall that as well.
And Mayor, that was the two questions I had, thank you.
I, you know, I was trying to get something out to council by the end of the week or something on that. So we have some time, but no page just.
And just for understanding timelines, my understanding is that if the resort tax passes, that even if this ordinance has not yet been passed, we can immediately begin collecting that resort tax. And the resort tax will continue to be accessible under the existing rules until such time as this gets passed. So this isn't an emergency that we have to have it passed last month, this is. This is something we can't get right. I think it is urgent that we do so, but I think we should all feel comfortable, or at least a core of us should feel comfortable with it moving forward. So if 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 you think we're moving too fast, throw your hands in the air and say, slow down. Wait a minute.
I'll get it. Linda, let me ask you this. Can I take out all the lines? You can set drops for me.
Yeah. Oh, I, I, I would like to request that they stay there, because I have not yet had a chance to go back line to line compare it, and I much appreciate that.
I hear what I'll do. I'll save it.
You can hide them. You can actually hide them, turn them off and on too, in your edits. Oh, it's a word thing, sorry.
I will save it. I'll fix, I'll make a clean copy and keep the line copy for Dave. And soon.
Great, you, I need to catch.
No, sorry. I was, I didn't.
So where are we at here, guys? Get a clean copy with the changes? Move that one.
Yeah, I like a clean copy.
It's, it's right what my hopes are, is if we can get it all passed out, that maybe vote on it the night. And then the next, yeah, then by, I checked the days. Then at the work session, put it on the agenda for final approval. And then it will go into effect 30 days after that. So if we can.
But if we miss it, it just adds two weeks.
I don't know. I just, I like, I like it to, let's just get it done on Tom.
Right.
Okay, move forward, let's, we'll just have it by the end of the week, then.
If 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 I am the only one that has a a hold for the lines, I'm okay with getting rid of that, because we still have this copy.
Well, I can save it and then take the line.
I just, I I am full of having multiple copies floating around given past experiences.
The line copy beyond line. And then that way.
And maybe put the date in as part of the title or something.
That'll work, yeah.
Or a footer.
Yes.
Have, no, have we already come to decisions on all the other changes? Is that we're? I mean, we're talking about voting on it in two weeks?
Yes.
Are there specific changes that you'd like to have additional discussion on?
Yeah. Yeah, I I I really don't want us to be holding people's $500 for the duration of the time that they're in business here.
I think we addressed that one, that it's going to be a class change. It's going to be a hot one year, unless they go to liquid, in which case it's five years.
And that's exactly in the ordinance as it's written. That's exactly what's in there. I mean, there's, there's a whole stuff that we're talking about that's already in here. And the resort tax committee, we, in the ordinance, it's called a committee. Well, when we made our resort tax review board, that was, that was really different, because they weren't making the decisions about what's going to be taxed and what's not. That's what the resort tax committee in the ordinance does. That resort tax review board was different, because they were deciding the ballot language for the 3% and the 1%, which was a whole new, new thing for us.
So so what, what is the danger proposing or proposing we not make?
I'm proposing that we only make the changes that came out of the resort tax board. And then clean up the, the references to 2-4-15, which is 2-4-14. And those, just clean that stuff up. And then, and also, it doesn't have to say, it just has to be an amendment to 901A, because 901A repealed all of those previous ordinances. It repealed them. That's how it's written, that it repealed them. So it only has to be an ordinance amending Chapter 4, Title 2, Fair Lodge Municipal Code, Administrative Ordinance 901A. And you could call it 901B or 901 Second Amended, because you don't have to make it all complicated. The, the, all those things were already repealed.
Let's, let's take that point and have a discussion on it. I I'm okay with with resetting the counter based on the timing of the new resort tax, even if it's in large part a copy of 901 dot previous. I will.
Absolutely.
Snapshot.
That, that has been, it, that was.
You're talking over him now.
So so Mayor, I'd be curious to hear what the rest of the council has. I I like the idea of a new snapshot.
Micah?
I like the idea of the 952 as well.
Um. I'm just. I think. I don't think we, I don't, I don't think we need to go over again, to be honest with you.
We don't need to, what I'm starting here.
We need another.
You're, you're, you're going to just dot A, dot first or second amended?
Well, we don't have an A. It was by 901 First Amended, so it had to be 901 Second Amended. And then if you make it again, the third amended.
So I'm hearing two and two by the time we get to Tom.
I would go with the first option.
I didn't agree with the two and two. I just talked to you two, and once Tom.
I I I thought Mary said go with, with, with just amended next. And and Tom said amended next. Micah and I said snapshot.
Right. Robbie? Do you want a new number or take with the old number?
I have, my brain had shut off about a half hour ago.
You want to?
Trying to close all this out, so I won't have to get as much electric shock therapy after this meeting.
Lori?
I'm gonna go with Tom.
You're going with Tom? Here we go.
I, I, I think that's probably something that can be had. If if the wording, what I, let me, let me say what I heard. And Councilman Cameron, please correct me if I, if I misheard it wrong, that what you picture, regardless of what the number happens to be, will resemble more closely an amended version of what's already in place, regardless of what the number is. Did I get that part correctly?
Absolutely.
Okay. So so then it's, it's staying closer to what was in place. And the reality is, the numbering thing, I think, is a minor issue after that. And and we could have it. What I would propose that we do, in the interest of time that we are quite over, and I understand that brains are fried and it might be included, is I would like to, in our dis, well, I'm gonna say what I was gonna say, and then I'm gonna preempt and say what the mayor was gonna say to override it. I'd say I would like to have a discussion of like, these are the things that I think I want to be old as a bullet point list. But then the mayor's gonna rightfully say, we should try to respond to as much of that as far in advance as possible, so that we at least have a shot at getting something through at the next meeting. Did I, did I guess right?
Argument over numbers.
No, no, but 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 there's points that she's saying you've added stuff that are not necessary. But but stuff is very ambiguous.
Well.
But, well, I don't.
Was in the old one.
Then we're keeping it.
Then we're keeping it.
And the stuff that's new in here, Becky, is that, and the copy, so there, there's three questions. The copy that you sent us, can you make it very, very clear of the stuff that is new in this as opposed to what's in the old one? Does, does, does that work, Mary?
I'll do it in a different color and say in the email, all additions are in.
Purple or whatever.
Some of the colors don't read good, so, I mean, so I'll fix it. So it's easy to read and one of what.
And and then the expectation of us will be, if there are concerns about that, that we respond to staff in a timely fashion, so that if it's possible for those concerns to be addressed, they can be, even if it means we come to council with an A and a B, then we're just saying, are we going with A or B? And we can have that discussion quickly and make progress.
We do that in the work session before.
Yeah, in the work session before.
Let me add something here. We got the final addition from the staff at 4:15 on Thursday afternoon, before a three-day weekend, and we had a council meeting on Tuesday. I sent to everybody, including the resort tax, the staff, and the resort tax committee, the staff, and the council, and the mayor, a copy of what I would propose, which was very simplified. So if we could consider part of that, if we, if we get this by Friday, say we get this by Friday, so that we have, you know, a week and a day or 10 days or whatever, to look it over and actually come and have a discussion about, I'd like to change, and let's talk about this, is that going to be possible? Because it doesn't seem like it is possible.
I'm willing to give.
It's impossible on the end.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, I'm willing to give it a shot. Lori? Good.
And I, I will go through and review. I, I will concede that there are several emails in my box due to the large bulk and that I have not had a chance to, I had to prioritize what I had read coming into this meeting. Now, understanding that that email is there, I will add that to my list and encourage other council folks to do the same.
Okay. Are we good at moving forward as we have? As we're going to do. Mary? Okay. Okay. Lori has an announcement, and then we could jet out of here.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I want to bring everybody to speed on the Fourth of July parade. We were good to go. We, Lonnie and I filled out the forms for the county. And we, I had mine for this, but then we found out that there is a problem with the insurance. If the rodeo association does not have a rodeo, they don't have the insurance that covers the parade. So we're looking to MMIA to see if the city's insurance would cover the parade. And we haven't gotten a response back from them yet. So you will see this on the next council, I mean, for approval, if we're gonna do the parade. So it's gonna be short time.
Do we know a certain key that the rodeo is not moving forward, or is that still up in the air?
That's still up there. We're gonna find out on June the first.
Things are looking very positive of having a rodeo.
Yeah.
So we may make some changes, but we are looking very positive that actually we're gonna do something. We're gonna have a rodeo. We may have some.
Yeah. And if there's a rodeo of three days, it can be three days worth of parades. If there's not, then there's just one day of parade. And the council, Bill Bullock, called me today and wants me to change the route a little bit, so that we can use Oak Street as well as Broadway, so that people can have more space to stand if they need to get by their. So there's the whole, it keeps changing a little bit. So I'm just letting everybody know that by the time that we bring it to you for approval, we're gonna do it right away, because this time is, we're running out of time. But everything keeps changing. So bear with me, please, on that.
We don't want more businesses not being able to pay their resort tax. We need to have a parade in the rodeo.
Yeah.
And it sounds like we should plan on that second meeting in June is going to be, need to have a couple of action items on it.
Yes.
Because.
Yeah, because we're running out of time. And it's not anybody's fault. As we get closer to the possibility, things keep changing. And the same with the insurance, nobody even thought about.
I asked Lonnie if I made a policy about MMIA to give us an answer back, because they don't always get it back that fast. So when she finds that, I'm gonna rate it like, oh, what you manage, right?
So we're at the end of our meeting. The last thing is public comment. Does anyone out there have any comment, public comment for us? Going once, going twice? Meeting's done. Thank you.
In the meantime, if anybody needs to be blamed for anything, Lori, go ahead and blame me. I'm okay.
I blame you every day.
I, I'm good with that.